Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the 23rd January 2012 meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. We will begin the meeting with general announcements. Oh, right. I always have to make the announcement. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and by the East Hampton Public Access Cable.
The next school committee meetings are Monday, February 27th and Tuesday, March 13th, 2012. There's a half day of school on Monday, January 30th due to a half day of professional development and semester change. There is a half day of school on Tuesday, February 7th due to a half day of professional development. There is no school February 20th through February 24th due to President's Day and winter break. There is no school on Tuesday, March 6th due to the presidential primary elections, parent-teacher conferences and professional development. There's a half day of school on Friday, April 6th due to teacher professional development. There is no school April 16th through April 20th due to Patriots' Day and spring break.
Any other announcements that people want to make? Okay, then I would just like to say that the school committee would like to thank the individuals helping tape this evening's production and volunteers are always welcome to help out. If you would like to assist, anyone interested in helping to tape city government meetings should call Greg at 413-203-1360. Do we have any correspondence?
Just one. There's a newsletter here from Chartwell's. If anybody would like to read it, it's here.
Chartwell's just got some recognition in the newspaper.
Mm-hmm. And there is a little article there about Andrew Stratton, our food service director, and the local foods initiative that he's starting here and in Granby.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. We have a motion regarding gifts.
I will, we accept the gifts listed. Do I need to list them or?
There's only one.
Yes, yeah.
I'll accept the motion. We have a-
Second.
Right. There's been a motion made and seconded to accept with gratitude and appreciation a gift of $25 that helps students who might otherwise not be able to participate in activities do so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Are there any matters for public speak? Anyone here who'd like to speak before Andy speaks? Because we know we have to, we're shifting our agenda slightly to accommodate a pressing schedule. Alright? So then the next item that we will address is whether there is a subcommittee report for the finance subcommittee.
I thought we were going to do it, Andy, right now. Yes.
Oh, okay. So we'll go to budget. I was, I thought there were three. I apologize. I thought there were three things. So what we'll do is the budget update and then we'll schedule the budget work sessions.
You can move my computer, Andy. Put it on the floors.
It's okay. It'll be fine. Right here.
It is there.
So anyways, in your packets, where, was it December 31st, results of operations? I can answer any questions you want. I think it was reported last meeting about the December changes in school choice. The good news, yes, it was reported. So keep our fingers crossed that that holds firm through the year. So yeah, I can entertain any questions you may have.
I just had one, Andy. Legal services in the system?
Yes.
Over by fourteen and a half thousand for the year already?
Uh, yes. We, that is going to have to be addressed one way, but if, also if you look and see, there's $35,000 still encumbered. So we project out so that potentially could, we could have some breakage as far as, uh-
Okay.
You know, that's kind of a worst-case scenario, but if not, if it all comes to fruition, then, then we could end up needing to look to address that from somewhere else.
Okay.
Because we, you're right, it, it's a $15,000 expenditure so far.
That's correct. That's correct.
Andy, I had just two questions.
Sure.
One is under East Hampton High School budget.
Okay.
And I know you have it listed as guidance counselor.
Mm-hmm.
$236,000 and some dollars.
Correct.
How many counselors? We're not talking one.
No.
How many are we talking?
There are four, I think.
In the system?
No, guidance counselor.
This is at, it's under the East High, East Hampton High School budget.
Let me, I believe it's three or four, and three of them, and I believe, I believe it's three. So I was gonna just pull up the budget.
I forgot about our school-to-work counselor.
Right. That's what I-
So that really is counselors. It's-
Correct. It's, it's, that's correct.
I was going to apply for the job in case.
All based on, yes, it's plural. More than one, and it is, that is the description used by the Department of Ed, the function code description. So there'd be, you know, the adjustment counselor. We had one there as well.
And my second question is sort of along the same line.
Yeah.
So I, and I, you are the source. School nurse professional salary?
Yes.
Uh, 185,860. Is that, how many school nurses are?
That is district-wide. That's all the nurses, including the lead nurse. So that is, nurses, we have... Four, four plus a school, six actually.
Okay. Alright, thanks, Andy.
Well, there were six positions. I don't know if we have one that's not filled. But yes, six.
Alrighty.
Does anyone else have questions for Andy? Is there time for you to make a brief comment on, normally the mayor can comment on this. Do we have any indications about the upcoming budget cycle? We're about to schedule budget work session meetings. Should we be preparing the parents and the voters in the city for another difficult year? And what are the major factors influencing that?
Sure. I would say, yes, definitely another difficult year. We're hearing about increases in Chapter 70, but with the, we fund, the city funds the district above minimum. So we are also impacted by the unrestricted aid. And depending on what you read, that is all, that's gonna be taking another reduction with the potential of having it backfilled as the year begins. That's some of the things that I've read. I read a comment from Lieutenant Governor. I guess he presented at a conference or a meeting regarding that, which does kind of run counter to some of the things that Nancy and I heard from Michael Widmer that, you know, things are actually, and he's normally doom and gloom. He was actually relatively positive when we heard him speak about, you know, best-case scenario, consider level funding. And he didn't make any delineation. He's saying that tax revenues are up. I just got a State House newsletter thing saying that we're still looking at a billion-dollar statewide deficit. So as Nancy and I talked about earlier, it's kind of a, we don't know at this stage of the game. So with those factors in place, I mean, we have, for all intents and purposes, the administration team has gone, and we have a preliminary level service budget for next year, all ready to go to show the gap between funding sources and funding uses, should we be level funded from the city. And it's not, it's tough. It's gonna be tough.
Because, again, just for education purposes, level funded doesn't mean level serviced.
That's correct.
Right.
Well, and each year, obviously salaries go up and insurance goes up and all of our costs go up. So if we're level funded, then we don't have enough money to provide all the services that we have this year.
And you're still smiling.
Hey, what can you?
Good. I'm happy to see it.
He's definitely the glass-half-full kind of person.
I'm not, I'm normally not. But anyways, so yeah, we, the thought was, as far as scheduling work sessions, was that if we could see about, and I'll send an email to the finance subcommittee, see about scheduling a meeting with the finance subcommittee, whether it's sometime next week. And then from there, because then we can talk in a little more detail about what level service looks like. And then, we are currently, right now, the leadership team is going through their respective budgets, and we've given them some exercises to do regarding prioritizing programs, if you will. And it's a different approach than we've done in the past, but it's actually pretty effective as far as really thinking along the lines of solid programs, and especially with the light of the, in light of the new strategic plan we have here. So, you know, kudos to the administration for doing that. It's a, it's not a pleasant job, but, you know, it is gonna prepare us as far as, you know, putting forward the best argument regarding a program-based budget. So that is ongoing as we speak. So we'll be ready as far as to begin discussions, you know, the following couple of weeks, you know, the month of February, we can schedule things. It also does kind of hinge on when the mayor needs the proposed budget from the school committee for us to have our public hearing on it. So once we know that, we can sort of backdate. We may need to schedule another school committee meeting to do, you know, the public hearing on the budget. But when we get that, we'll obviously have some discussions regarding that. But, you know, if we can either look at dates for people that are, you know, for the workshops that would work best for people, I don't know how we want to coordinate that, but, you know, we need to make those public and posted, so.
Alright.
So, let's look at dates.
Right.
And what, since yours is a crucial role, are there any dates, days of the week that you're already unavailable?
Well, I'm, as long as it's early enough notice, I can be flexible.
Okay.
So, I will, you know-
We have two meetings on the 27th of February and the 13th of March. Does the finance subcommittee already have a meeting?
No, we don't. That's what you're saying.
Scheduled.
Right. I was gonna send out an email to the subcommittee.
I know, um, next week is not good for either Lori or myself because the play's going on and we have kids involved.
Sorry. Well, we'll have the meeting at the play.
You're anxious, huh?
Yeah, well, that's fine. I mean, you know, it's, you know, we can-
Maybe the week after.
Maybe the week after. We can look at something with the finance subcommittee. We don't necessarily need to meet with the finance subcommittee before we start the workshops, but, you know, the whole role of the finance subcommittee to sort of get into a little more detail regarding, you know, our thought was, we present to them the, what the draft level service budget looks like and the deltas to get the finance subcommittee, in their role, a little more intimately aware of the funding sources, projected funding uses, and what's available, and to, you know, get them thinking and get their input as to what they think might be effective as far as going forward.
It's been a while since we met.
So that, you're, you're thinking of the possibility, you said the play will be done by the week of the, of the 6th of February?
Mm-hmm.
So is it, was it your sense that you would meet in that week, or that you would like to-
We'll have to shoot dates out. Lori's not here.
Okay, so shoot a date then. So we're looking at then, um, two weeks prior to our meeting on the 27th?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, three weeks. We have the week of the 13th, the week of the 20th. No, right. So we would have the week of the 13th and the week of the 20th? I'm sorry, am I misunderstanding? I thought we wanted to settle on a budget work session meeting now.
We were, yeah, we were-
Right. So let's, let's pull out our calendars and, and find a date in, within those two week, that two-week window that works for folks.
The 6th or the 13th?
The weekend, the week of the 13th or the week of the 20th? Right?
The week of the 20th is winter break. I don't know if that matters.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure-
We can try.
Do you want to try? Well, let's start with Monday, the 13th. Is that-
Sure.
A reasonable time to schedule a budget work session for folks?
Is Monday the, is, does it need to be on Mondays?
No, I just started on the first day. I'm, what, what are, what's folks' availability? It's rare that I'm here with my calendar, so I'm already ahead of the game.
But Tuesdays an option?
Tuesdays are an option if, if-
Tuesday, the 14th is Valentine's Day. If anybody wants to. Keep that in mind. Remember, we had a school building committee meeting that on Valentine's Day last year.
It's a predominantly male group. Sometimes they forget. It's a good thing to schedule a meeting on that day, then they can all be reminded to go get something on the way home.
Red may be an appropriate color with the way the numbers are looking.
Is this a, I'm sorry, is this a meeting for the whole school committee?
Yes, for the whole school committee to work to the budget.
Then I cannot come on the 14th. I have another meeting.
Okay, the 14th is out, the-
I can come on the 13th. Was that out?
I can come on the 13th.
Yeah.
That might be out for a couple of us.
Okay.
Uh, how about the 15th, Wednesday?
It's out from-
Does Mike usually attend those budget sessions? It's a Wednesday. City Council meets on Wednesday.
Yes and no. He's been at the last few.
I wouldn't be able to make it on a Wednesday.
Can't make a Wednesday. Okay. What about Friday, the 17th? I'm sorry, on Thursday, does someone know the precise time of the play at Center Pepin? I have it in my calendar that I'm out that evening for the play, but I, I don't have the-
It's probably 6:00.
Right. So I could meet before 6:00 or, yeah, that's-
That might be challenging for you.
Well, it's, you know, the rest of the evening is, Tuesday, I teach on Tuesday and Thursday evenings from, but I can move the meeting time later in, in the evening. The class traditionally runs from 7:00 to 8:30, but we have moved it to 7:30 at various times. So if there's a consensus on a Tuesday or a Thursday that works for people, the 14th doesn't work if, and the 16th has this play, so then we're in, either Friday, the 17th, or we're into the week of the 20th.
I don't think Friday is a very good time to schedule.
Right. So I was wondering about then looking at Monday, the 20th, which is a holiday. It's President's Day. Um, and there's no school that whole week, but I don't know what.
That's okay with me.
It's okay with me.
Monday, the 20th, or?
Um, you can't do it on holiday. Thank you.
Oh, you can't.
I thought we could meet, we just couldn't vote.
I don't, the offices are closed on that.
Right, the offices are closed. Okay.
So I don't, I don't believe you can do it.
Okay. Uh, then-
21st?
And again, I can-
Thought they were closed the whole week.
No, the, the-
Oh, just that Monday. Oh, sorry.
Just Monday, just for that, yeah.
And I can't on the 21st. I'm just gonna go back to the part of the-
We make, you know what, I, let me, let me go back to the, go back to the previous week. Monday, the 13th, how many of us can't make that? We don't know about, we think Lori can't make that? Is that right? Or is that the previous week was the play?
As of previous week.
Yeah.
Okay. So Monday, the 13th, how many of us can't make that evening? Because I think what it sounds like with the various things that are going on, it may in fact be that we need to meet without the whole group. It would be ideal if we could meet with everybody, but it does, it sounds to me like we're-
Can we meet at 5:30?
That would be the best, the most convenient, would be 5:30.
On-
Monday, the 13th.
Right.
The 13th.
But Monday, I thought I understood that somebody couldn't meet on Monday, the 13th.
Then, I had asked about Tuesday, just because that would be much easier for me.
Okay.
But it's not impossible for me on Monday.
Shall we settle with Monday, the 13th?
Is there any way, it could be 6 o'clock?
That's fine with me, either one.
Is that too late? No.
I think we could do 6:00.
6:00.
How about if we schedule Monday, February 13th, the 6th, with the understanding that we may not all be able to be here, and we'll do our best? But that way, we get an early start relative to our, our formal meeting on the 27th, um, two weeks later.
So, 13th at 6:00 PM?
Okay.
6:00, is that what we're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Andy, do you want anything else before we let you go?
No.
All the good stuff is gonna come up after you go, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, I don't envision even for just a sort of potentially allay any concerns out there. Even if you miss a workshop session, I mean, the information that Nancy, the leadership team, and I will be putting together, you know, you're gonna be very informed as to what it is that we're bringing forward and that the leadership would recommend for budget purposes. And, you know, even for finance subcommittee, you know, we always go into a little more detail. And I don't want to oversimplify it, but we're really kind of, you know, my vision of the first meeting is to go over the potential funding sources, to look at where things are regarding the projected revenues of choice, circuit breaker, the grants revolving accounts that we use. And, you know, that may be enough to cover the first meeting. And then the next one, you know, would be talking about the expense side and what a level service budget looks like in a little more detail. And then with the leadership, talk about what should we not get at the prioritize cuts, you know, very preliminary. I want to re, very preliminary, you know, until we know as far as more information regarding grants, state aid, and so on and so forth. So, not to worry.
Thank you, Andy.
Now.
Thank you. Alright.
Thanks, Andy.
Yes.
So then, I think we should move back to items for discussion in the subcommittee reports. Is that?
Mm-hmm.
And the finance subcommittee-
We have not met.
Does not have a report for this evening. We do have in our packets, the minutes from the December 14th meeting. I was not there, so I'll, I'll turn to Ladonna to-
Right. We did, we did talk about that a little bit, um, the last meeting. But we did meet tonight to talk about the concussion policy. And had a lot of discussion about that policy. Um, the M.A.S.E. had provided a proposed policy. Nancy reviewed that and compared it to the, um, the state regulations around that concussion policy that schools are required to have. And refined the M.A.S.E. policy into a new policy that we will eventually bring to you for approval. So, um, that was today's meeting. That was all the time we had to discuss about that. So we do not, we tentatively have a meeting scheduled for the 27th before our regular school committee meeting unless, of course, we have to schedule a budget workshop session, session.
Okay.
Right. And the one thing that I would just say to, to folks who are interested, it seems as though the, the policy that I reviewed tonight, again, I wasn't at the December meeting, and I, I know that Nancy Sykes, Nancy Follinsby, and Ladonna Crowe have all done a lot of, of looking at this. But it, it seems to me as though the, the revisions that are being made and, and the changes that are being made are to tailor it to our, um, our district. The one topic that came up that I know, I ask questions about, is the extent to which this policy fits with a, um, an array of policies that are designed to address any number of kinds of things that can come up in school life for students. But that there, there did seem to be the need for some clarification around what the responsibilities of the school is by state mandate specifically for athletes, but as part of a broader look at, at how we ensure the health and well-being of the, the students in all the various activities that they, there's a lot of discussion right now about concussions in the context of athletics. But we know that we are interested in the health and well-being of our, of our students throughout the school day. And so we did discuss ways that we could ensure that either through this policy or through a review of other existing policies, that we would adequately provide for concussion-related, um, protection for students, um, throughout the school system. Am I getting that right? I'm towards stumbling towards what we were working on there.
Peter, I think we were talking also about procedures and protocols that are in place as well as policies. Everything may not be captured in a policy.
Any other questions about that then? Thank you. Um, would you be kind enough, Bonnie, to, to give us an update on some of the student activities that you're aware of, and then we'll fill in the gaps?
Sure. Well, it sounds like you mentioned that Center Pepin's play is coming up.
Yes. I know that there's a production at Center Pepin, and I think there's both a day and evening performance on February 16th. That's what I have in my calendar because I have at least one member of my household is involved in the play and very much wants me to come see it. So I'm looking forward to that.
And the East Hampton High School Drama Club's annual musical is The Pajama Game. And that is going to be held or shown on Thursday through Sunday, February 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th. It's, uh, 6:00 on Thursday, the 2nd, 7:00 both Friday and Saturday, and 2:00 on Sunday. And, um, we'll be pushing that along so we can get home and watch the Super Bowl, I'm sure. And, um, I know that at least the East Hampton Boys basketball game, team had a game tonight because that's where Lori is, watching her son. Um, and I don't know how the basketball teams are doing. I think they're doing well.
Eighty-three.
What is it? What on?
Eighty-three, game three, so.
You know the basketball team too, right?
Just a little bit.
Uh, Bonnie, do you have information about tickets for the play?
I don't have a, I know there's a phone number on signs that you see around town. Starts 433. I don't remember the last few numbers, but I'm sure if you called any of the schools, they could, um, give you that phone number-
Mm-hmm.
To reserve tickets. Tickets are not general admission. They're, um, reserved tickets for seats. And they're going quickly, so get your seats.
Alright.
And, um, I also wanted to mention, I think you were gonna mention, Peter, the We the People. You're wearing your T-shirt plug there.
Right.
That's coming up on Saturday?
Yeah. Um, Kelly Brown's AP US History class at the high school is hard at work. They're a small group this year compared to the group that went last year, and that, the work is no less. So in fact, it's all the more impressive. The smallest number of students that I've ever taken to the statewide competition is 12. You can theoretically go with as few as nine. I understand the last time I did a head count with Kelly is that's right where they're at. So that means that each of those nine students is preparing a substantive response to six different questions. It would be equivalent, for those of you who remember doing this, writing six junior-year term papers instead of just one, and being prepared to publicly defend all six, even though you don't know which two you'll be chosen to defend. You'll be asked to defend. So I've, I've gone and had the opportunity to see the students in their preparation, and I think it's, it's extraordinary. They're the only, um, folks I know of locally who are, who are involved. And they're also doing their preparation for the College Board Advanced Placement Exam at the same time, which is a comprehensive exam and very challenging. And, um, I suspect that some of them will be praying for snow on Friday night, but that by Saturday, they will, as their classmates did a year ago when they're celebrating at lunch somewhere in, in Boston, realize that it went better than they thought, that they did better than they thought, and they'd be willing and able to, to do it again. So, um, you know, I don't, I will, I'm going actually to serve as a judge. So I'll be there, and I'll get to see them present, and I'll, I'll be tougher on them than I will on any of the other schools, in case anyone out there is worried that the East Hampton High kids will get a free pass. They won't. And I know a half dozen of the other judges, um, well, and they're all excited to, to see this. So it's gonna be a great civic event. The citizens of East Hampton should be very proud of their students for doing it. There are seven schools. Uh, how many school districts are there in the Commonwealth? What do we determine, 300 and?
Approximately. I don't know. I don't have a big number.
Some, some 300 high schools in the state could be doing this. Seven are. East Hampton's one of the seven, and should wish them all the best. And I will, you'll know between now and then, but I'll give you a report at the next meeting at what I'm sure will be an outstanding, um, performance. They were, you know, I'm sure they were paying attention to the Supreme Court's decision today about, you know, needing to have a warrant before you put GPS devices on automobiles and, you know, I'm sure they paid attention to the student-free speech decision that came down the other day, even though it should make teachers and administrators stay on their toes because the students now are protected for things that they say in off-campus-based sites from on-campus-based consequences. Um, you know, they're, they're doing, they're doing their thing. It's great stuff. So thank you for that prompt. And yeah, this is the, this is the shirt that they'll, they'll have. It's, this, last year it was at the John Mokley Federal Courthouse Building. This year, it's at what I affectionately refer to as the Dartmouth of Cambridge, otherwise known to some folks as Harvard University. So there, I, it'll be, it'll be a cool event.
Have fun.
Alright, is there, is there anything else, um, that we have? I know that all of you saw the information from the, from the state about the, the charter schools and the, and the latest legislation regarding that. And I encourage you to join me in reading through that to understand what the, the latest legislation there means. And I know that we have seen the discussion in the immediate area. The, there's a planned charter school in Holyoke with some overlap with the founders from the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts Charter School. So this is a continuing and important influence in the educational landscape and one that, I know I was reading, trying to decipher what it exactly means in legislation. I don't know if any of you came away with a particular conclusion. It sounded like there would be more, but that there was a limit on the number that it would be in- It sounded like there would be more, but that there was a, a limit on the number that it would be in an attempt, I assume, to, to maintain quality, um, control there so that all of the students who attend those schools, um, you know, it's well-supervised. Is there anything else? Okay, Nancy, I will turn to your report and an update on the new educator evaluation system. And the five-part cycle. Is this, should we have out that document that we got this evening?
Yeah, it would probably be helpful to you to have that out. At one point here.
Copy of the-
I thought I would, uh, do this on a PowerPoint because there's a lot of information, um, that's involved in this new educator evaluation system, the model system that the state has put out. And there will be a, a number of expectations that we as a district, as well as all the other districts in the Commonwealth, will, um, be required to fulfill, uh, in implementing this educator evaluation system. It's quite a change, uh, in the, in the regulations. And for some districts, it's going to be a larger change, I think, than for our district. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we go along. So here's an overview of the implementation timeline. In June of this year, the new regulations for the educator evaluation system were adopted. In January, just this, this very month, um, the department published the first components of the model system. Part of the regulations, uh, were that the, uh, uh, state would provide support for districts to implement these new regulations. So these model components are part of the support provided by the state for implementation. Uh, in the summer of this year, Race to the Top Districts will begin training and developing plans for implementing the model, uh, system. We are Race to the Top Districts, as you know, so we are required to implement the, uh, model system, um, earlier than other districts. September two thousand twelve, as a matter of fact, will be, uh, required to submit our proposed educator evaluation system and collective bargaining agreements to the department. So, um, parts of this system, the model system has parts that we are required to implement, but the procedures for implementing them are, um, uh, can be bargained collectively, will be bargained collectively. And we'll be, um, uh, collaborating with our, uh, union and management teams to come up with a system that we believe, uh, will work well for our district. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're really in a good place because a number of years ago, the anchor team, a team composed of management and union personnel, um, came up with the current evaluation system that we have in place. And our evaluation system now has, is a rubric system, which is what the model system is proposing. So we really aren't far from what this model system, the components of the model system are. And I think that's an advantage for our district.
Could you point out, are you going to go over the statistics that we learned in the webinar about the percentage of schools that use?
Uh, no. I, I didn't have that. Peter, perhaps you could supply that information for us.
I was struck by, in the course of the webinar, which I only saw part of, the percentage of schools statewide that have a clearly articulated rubric for the evaluation was remarkably small.
Yeah, the majority do not. I don't remember the exact numbers. I don't know if you do.
And I, it was striking because I think everyone in the, all of the administrative team that Nancy had assembled to participate in the webinar were, were sort of expecting that we would be sort of in the mix in the development of this process. And while there's clearly a lot that East Hampton needs to do, um, to, to meet the letter of the law and to really advance the spirit of the law, we're already well within the spirit and, and have done a lot of the work. I mean, it was really, it was a stunning number. I want to say that of, of the people who responded, that two-thirds of them-
Mm-hmm.
Thought that this would be entirely virgin ground-
Mm-hmm.
For their school districts. And we're in the process of talking about how we might change some of the language-
Mm-hmm.
In some of the rubrics-
Some of the procedures.
I mean, we were, and, and, and procedures. I mean, we were talking about that tonight in terms of just what we've worked on so far, um, in terms of the superintendent evaluation, that we're wordsmithing while other folks are saying, you know, how do you create these four-part documents? It was really stunning, to me.
No, and, and that's been our experience as I'll, as, as I go on. I'll talk about some more of the, um, support systems the state has put into place. And, uh, it is really interesting when they ask us to raise our hands if we currently have a, a rubric system of evaluation in our district and we really are in the minority. Very few hands go up, which is surprising because we've had this system in place for a number of years now. So. Um, so we will have to implement in the fall of this year. Uh, and then in the fall of two thousand thirteen, all the remaining districts will begin implementation. Um, we will benefit from the Level Four districts, the, um, um, the first adopters of the implementation program. Uh, Holyoke being one of them. Uh, in my induction, my superintendent induction program, um, we have a superintendent from Holyoke and we've been talking about the new model teacher evaluation system. And he's been very helpful in talking about his experiences as they've implemented it. Um, so it, it does, uh, it, it is a benefit for us to know where the challenges are and, and, um, you know, where the positives are. In two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, that's when we'll begin to have, uh, the rating of impact on student learning as part of the evaluation system, using data from student learning. That will happen in, in the following year. And in two thousand thirteen, the department will provide direction on use of student surveys because that's another piece of this model system that, uh, at the, uh, high school level, uh, at least, student surveys will be part of, uh, teacher evaluation. That won't happen until, uh, the, the department can come out with some, um, uh, support for that. So the support that the department has provided for us for implementation to date, our January tenth, we had a webinar, uh, which Peter attended and the leadership team, um, and the union president has been invited to all of these different support pieces too. Some she's able to go to, some she's not. But, you know, there are going to be plenty of opportunities as we go along. We did the webinar here in central office. On January nineteenth, a group of us, two, uh, building administrators, myself, the director of curriculum, went to a regional Getting Started Workshop in West Springfield. Um, facilitator was Carla Bear, who's really the, um, the force behind this, uh, new teacher evaluation, educator evaluation system. Um, they gave us lots of good information and answered a lot of questions and of course left us with some questions as well. February fourteenth, um, we as a leadership team, members of our leadership team are going to what's called a SMART Goals Workshop. Um, and this is, uh, SMART Goals are specific, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous and realistic and tracked. And SMART Goals will be, um, an integral part of every one of the educators' evaluation systems. So, um, superintendent, uh, building administrators, district administrators and teachers as well, so that the, the goals are actionable. We've really, in our strategic plan this year and our, um, school improvement and program improvement plans have really, uh, worked to getting close as close as possible to SMART Goals. I'm sure our training will help us become even more proficient at that. In February, there'll be release of the first seven training modules and train the trainer opportunities. So in order to implement the system, we're going to have to train our teachers. We're going to have to train our administrators, who are, who will be the evaluators. So the state is putting out training modules that we can bring back to our district and apparently, we don't have a lot of details on this, uh, train the trainer opportunities so that we can send, um, staff, uh, some of our administrators to be trained as trainers and come back and, and help, uh, implement this in our district. Uh, in the spring, um, the, the department will identify department-subsidized resources for training and supportive evaluators. So, um, they've, uh, chosen a number of different providers to help provide this training in the state. They will subsidize us to get the training. They won't pay for all of the training, but they will, um, subsidize training if we should choose one of these providers to help come in and, and work with us in the district. So the model system components, I think I put this in your packet, um, and these are on the district website. And I've got the website address at the end so that you can go and, um, you can download them. You can open them up and look at them. You can make copies of them. These are the, uh, the documents that we're working with right now. There's quite a thick packet. And, uh, the first one is the District Level Planning and Implementation Guide. The second one is the School Level Planning and Implementation Guide. These really are worthwhile documents if you want to see exactly what the state has in mind for us. The third one is the Guide to Rubrics and Model Rubrics for Superintendent, Administrator and Teacher. And I know that you've seen some samples of the rubrics for superintendent. They came right out of that document. Uh, the fourth part is the Model Collective Bargaining Contract Language. That has not come out yet, but is expected within the next week or two. The fifth part, Implementation Guide for Principal Evaluation. The sixth part, Implementation Guide for Superintendent Evaluation, which I did give, uh, Peter a copy and, uh, I think he was going to have copies made for all of you. And the seventh part, the Rating Educator Impact on Student Learning. This one, uh, hasn't come out yet. This is again, Impact on Student Learning, uh, as a, a valuation tool. And part eight has not come out yet either, Using Staff and Student Feedback. When you look at these documents, what I, I think you'll realize is that there's a, a real strong vertical thread. So the superintendent evaluation looks like the administrative evaluation, looks like the teacher evaluation. They really all have the same components, um, different parts of them, but, uh, essentially these same basic components that the research shows, uh, will provide a, a good evaluation system and, and val- evaluation tools. So this is the five-step evaluation cycle for all educators. Uh, you see self-assessment, goal setting and plan development. Step three, implementation of the plan. Step four, formative assessment and evaluation somewhere along the way during the year, um, probably mid-year. And then the summative evaluation at the end. This is the department's, uh, graphic for the five-step evaluation system. Um, and their goal is that every educator is an active participant in an evaluation. In the past, um, teachers in particular have of- often felt that evaluation was done to them as opposed to having them participate in what's going to be most meaningful to them. So in the new model, uh, administrators and teachers sit down, uh, teachers do their own self-assessment and come with, um, some goals in mind. Um, the goals have to be linked to the district strategic plans, district improvement plans, school improvement plans, and should be tied to our professional development plan as well. So there's some parameters. But the, um, teachers will have, um, a, a good amount of conversation about what their goals are going to be and how they're going to be supported in them, as will I with, uh, administrators in the district and as will you with me. So it's a, a cycle for all of us. Now the rubrics, excuse me, an important part of this, uh, evaluation system. The department, uh, defines the purpose of rubrics in the evaluation system to help educators and evaluators. Develop a consistent, shared understanding of what proficient performance looks like in practice. Develop a common terminology and structure to organize evidence. Make informed professional judgments about performance ratings on standards. And this is a sample of what the, um, rubric pages look like. I think you've had one from the superintendent evaluation. Thank you. Recovering from a cold here tonight. Um, the, uh, the rubrics all have standards. There are, uh, in, in each of the different, either administrator or educator evaluations, there are four to six standards, four standards rather. There are, um, uh, then indicators, four to six indicators for every standard. And then there are elements and there are one to four elements for every, uh, indicator. And then as you can see, the elements all have descriptors, uh, rubric-type descriptors. So they're unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. Now, I'm just going to take a, um, uh, piece from the superintendent rubric, just as an example. I think this helps flesh it out a little bit, to, to look at the rubric structure. So standard four in the superintendent rubric is professional culture. And there's a description of that in the, uh, rubric, what they mean by professional culture. So a lot of what working with these rubrics is going to be is unpacking them, really thinking about exactly what they mean. Under standard four, indicator four C, so that would be, uh, the third indicator in that standard is called communications. And then, um, an element in communications, actually element C one, so it's the first element in the communications indicator of professional culture is communication skills. And then these are the descriptors for that indicator. Exemplary demonstrates strong context and audience, specific interpersonal written and verbal communication skills is able to model this element. Proficient demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. Our advice from the department is that in evaluating educators, for the most part, everyone will fall into proficient. They stress this to us over and over again, unless there are indicators that the, um, the educator is truly exemplary. Um, and so we know that in, in our, uh, schools and in our administrative staff, um, you know, we have, uh, people who, uh, show evidence of being exemplary, probably not across all of the standards and indicators, but certainly in some areas. But the advice from the department is really this year to, um, consider proficient as our target with, uh, uh, you know, a few instances where exemplary will, um, come into play. Needs improvement, may demonstrate adequate interpersonal written and verbal communication skills, but sometimes makes grammatical error or errors or has difficulty expressing ideas to stakeholders. And unsatisfactory demonstrates ineffectual interpersonal written or verbal communication skills at times. And this is just to show you the degrees of descriptors for each of those, um, uh, indicators. So our next steps are to take the model evaluation system and either adopt, adapt or revise it. Now, if we adopt it, um, we just send it off to the state and we say we've adopted it and that's all there is to it. If we adapt it, there's a form, or revise it, there's a form where we need to justify any adaptations or any revisions that we've made to the model system. That goes to the state and then they, um, in turn will get back to us with their decision about whether they accept our, uh, adaption, uh, or, or revision. Now, there are certain, uh, ways that we can be more flexible with a rubric. Um, we just got a, a little introduction to that now. Uh, one thing would be that, um, in our district, we might decide that cer- we're going to really focus more on certain standards than others um, or on certain indicators because they match up with our strategic plan. So when we create, uh, plans for the educators in our district, they'll be around those particular indicators or elements uh, in, in, um, the rubric. So there are different ways of having some flexibility without going a whole route of adapting or revising. They are also, the state's also in the process of creating, uh, rubrics for some of the, um, positions in the district that don't fall as nicely and neatly into some of these rubrics that we currently have. Uh, and they'll be coming out with those, uh, as we go along. So what they recommend for us as some of the first next steps are for leadership team to study the Implementation Guide for Principal Evaluation. And we actually have started looking at, uh, the different components of the model system already. And we'll hone in on this principal evaluation, um, guide and think about what that means for our practices administrators. And we'll getting, be getting support from the state and from our training in how to do this as well. Superintendent and School Committee study the Implementation Guide for Superintendent Evaluation. You're already one step ahead of the game here because you've been looking at it and looking at pieces of it. Principals begin to introduce the model rubric to faculty. Um, Carla Bear, uh, couldn't stress enough that we should just not hand over the whole rubric because if, if you've looked at the superintendent rubric, it's, it's quite detailed. But to take a piece of it and unpack it and have teachers working together, administrators working together to think about what does this really mean? What does it look like? Um, you know, what, what will we, how will we know when we see it? So to really take time to unpack the rubric. And to organize a Labor Management Educator Evaluation Team to study the Guide to Rubrics and the School Level Implementation Guide. Um, and we have a, a very- And we have a very active labor union group, and we have a labor management group in our anchor team already, so, you know, we'll start to think about what this team will look like in the very near future here. And to continue to use the department website for updates, and here it is. So if you go to that website, and you look over on the left, you'll see a link to the model evaluation system, you'll see a link to the PowerPoints that have been done in the different workshops and webinars that we've gone to. They really are doing a very good job of putting everything up on the website for us to use and to bring back to our districts to those people who haven't seen them. So that's a brief overview. As I say, it's very complex, it's very detailed, it's got lots of pieces. I think there are many, many good aspects of the new model system, but I think there will be challenges for all of us in the implementation stage of this educator evaluation system. I think we're fortunate in our district, as I say, that we've had a system that was similar, and that we have a good working relationship with our teachers, with our union, and with the school committee and management, and I have every confidence that we'll work together to put into place an evaluation system that benefits all of us here in East Hampton. Any questions? Probably a lot of questions, but, and I'm not sure that I can answer them all, as we're just getting our toes wet with this, too. Nancy.
Like you say, Nancy, this may be one that'll come up later, the answer to it later. It just, so I'll just put it out there. What role does the Model Collective Bargaining Contract play as far as the evaluation process? I mean, I didn't quite understand how that was sort of in there with faculty administrators and, you know. What are we evaluating as far as the collective bargaining?
We aren't actually evaluating anything in terms of the collective bargaining, but a change in the educator evaluation system in our district is an item for bargaining. So it's the procedures for the evaluation that will be bargained with our bargaining unit. And that's what the contract bargaining piece is about. The state's going to give us language that, you know, if we and union decide that it meets our needs, and then that it describes what it is that we want in our system, we can adopt that just as it is. But it may be that we want to take the language we currently have and look at how we might adapt that to meet our needs. So I don't know that much about it yet, because I don't know what the state is recommending, but...
Well, more later, then.
Yes, more later.
Okay.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's interesting that the race to the top schools have a different timeline.
Well, that's because we have the money.
Oh, okay.
We were given the grant, and because we have the grant, they can have this be one of the requirements. And they clearly, you know, as a race to the top district, the state, you know, indicated that they would put in this new teacher evaluation system. So anybody who received grant funds, of course, we were going to be the first ones to implement, which, you know, on the one hand, you know, we have to do this faster than maybe we'd like to do, might like to have more time. But on the other hand, we're being given a tremendous amount of support, as were the early adopters, and we have them as the model, and we're being given support as the first districts in race to the top. So it has its advantages as well, I believe. Thank you.
I failed to mention one item before under other, and just to share with you my brief impression of the outreach program that Rob Orlando described, the principal of Center Pepin, that he described at his presentation earlier in the fall about holding open houses in various parts of the community. I had the good fortune to attend one of the, I think, one of the initial, it may not have been the first, but one of the first opportunities where Rob meets in the home of parents of students in the district. And the parents in that home invite parents of other schoolchildren in the neighborhood so that Rob can have a smaller-scale conversation that he hopes will provide more direct communication to him about how things are going, things that people would like to see go differently, a chance for people to share what they think is going well, and to really engage in a very direct conversation. As I said, was only able to stay for about an hour and a half. I know that the meeting went late, and I presume the conversation remained as vigorous as when I was there, but I was just really impressed, and again, I wondered how often throughout the Commonwealth principals sit down in that small setting. He talked about the importance of the school councils. I know that we have at least one current member of a school council on the school committee, and that formerly people had served on those. He talked about the importance of parent-teacher organizations, clearly of individual parents who would and can communicate with him. But I think there's something about the not being located in the school, the school councils meet in the school, and there's something about that meeting in a household. I was talking about the scale of, you know, I think there were maybe 16 folks there in total at one point, people coming in and out. And, you know, people were talking directly about the experience of their own child, as well as their aspirations for, you know, sort of all children in the district. And I want to commend Rob for doing it, and applaud the district for supporting his effort in doing it, and I have no idea what he took from it, because he and I have not spoken since then, but I imagine that, you know, knowing Rob as the good listener and the dedicated administrator that he is, that this is going to add to the range of information that he's getting. So I want to encourage other parents in the community, because the invitations will be coming out. He's planned more and is looking to get into as many neighborhoods as he possibly can. Clearly, he can't meet, you know, with every parent in the district 12 by 12, but he's already met with more than he had before doing this. So I think it was a productive evening from the perspective of a parent. And I hope any of you have the opportunity to attend one of these events in your neighborhood will do so. It was really terrific. And, you know, again, one of the things that came out of this, Nancy knows that the state is always talking about artifacts as evidence of, you know, what's going on. And this is certainly evidence of, you know, one of the things that administrators are assessed on is their community engagement, and clearly, this is a proactive, and while I don't know that anybody was writing down everything that occurred, I think we all participated in a heck of a good artifact. So I hope it adds to the continued progress at Center Pepin and throughout all our schools.
That is so impressive, and I think he is very, very impressive.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, we have things that are equally impressive going on in our other schools as well. I think that all of our administrators are making every effort that they can, and some innovative efforts, to reach out to families in the community and to get, you know, responses from our parents and to find out what their needs are. So, you know, it was part of our strategy, our strategic plan, and, you know, I think every one of our administrators has something in their plan related to that, so.
I was impressed with, I mean, I'd heard bits and pieces about it, but in our packet was Maple's newsletter and Tim Luce's principal's note, talking about the soundproofing of the cafeteria in more detail than I had heard, and some painting in the entranceway that was done, and some other things that were done by parents, all volunteers, parent engineers, parents who just have creative side to them, and it was really, really impressive. And I know that's in our packet, so if people haven't read that, um...
We are so fortunate to have the parents in our community and community members who volunteer to work in our schools, to beautify our schools. We have some very old schools, you know, very well-maintained, but they are old.
Classics.
Classics, that's true.
Yes.
And yes, the painting that was done in the entryway to Maple School is really quite spectacular. I saw it the other day, so it's just a nice, warm, welcoming arch. And of course, we remember all the parents who worked at Whitebrook to renovate the gymnasium last year. And the cafeteria is just a tremendous improvement at Maple School. The teachers, the children, actually, Mr. Luce was telling me that he didn't think the children were even talking as loudly or yelling as loudly, maybe because they didn't need to.
Right.
Because the acoustics are so much better now in that space. So we just feel very, very fortunate to have the community we have that supports our schools the way they do.
Good stuff.
Good point, yeah.
All right, I think we have some matters for action.
Uh, yes. Motion to approve the minutes from the Superintendent Evaluation Work Session on January 9th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of the work session. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, motion to approve the minutes of the regular session on January 9th, 2012, with one amendment. I bel, under Policy Review Subcommittee, the motion to approve the second reading, it says first reading, I believe I should say second reading?
Just cross it off and put second.
Second, okay.
Okay.
Of the substitute teacher policy. And it was unclear to me exactly how the mayor voted on that. The minutes say seven oh approved.
I went back and listened to the tape, and it was, there was seven, no one against, no one abstaining.
Okay. He seemed to make a gesture that he did not approve it, so, okay.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the minutes of the January 9th, full school committee meeting.
As amended.
Sorry?
As amended.
As amended, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then Warren's payroll. Move to approve the school payroll dated January 26, 2012, in the amount of $523,434.92.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the school payroll dated 26th, January 2012, in the amount of $523,434.92. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January 19th, 2012, in the amount of $220,510.95.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 19th, January 2012, in the amount of $220,510.95. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
That's it.
And we have a field trip.
All right, this one, there's another one here, right? Okay, great. And then, yep, we'll entertain a motion on, it sounds like a fun field trip.
Yeah, I move to approve the field trip to Magic Mountain to be led by Rob Orlando on February 22nd.
Second.
Second. But just to be sure that everyone understands, if they just catch this, all of the costs associated to this are borne by the families who choose to participate. With that caveat, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
entertain another motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
I just need some signatures. Is there enough of us for signature?
Yes.
So?